If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. This time, do we have any public comments on agenda items only? And I believe our auditor is going to come up and speak.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to introduce, once again, Mr. Tony Gagliardi from Classic and Associates. Talk a little bit about our audit that's for approval this evening, and just a couple of updates concerning that. Thank you for being with us.
Of course, yeah. So I think most of you would have been here last, just last month, I think, that when I was here doing a quick presentation of the audit. So, once again, thanks for having me back. Try and keep this short and sweet with the snow out there tonight, right? So, basically, the big thing that, you know, I was talking to Jason and Dr. Fox about that, I wanted to point out that, you know, we were talking about a lot of stuff, I know, last time. So there was a change in your fund balance from, you know, the beginning, your fund balance that would have been on last year's statements compared to the beginning on this year. And I just kind of wanted to briefly explain why that exists and, you know, why that's the case. So, for a number of years now, you guys have shown, under your liabilities, you guys have shown accrued payroll. So basically, what accrued payroll means is money that you guys are owed out to salaries as of June 30th. Here's money that we still owe people, that still has to be paid out. So in other words, to your teachers, for the July and August payments to your teachers. To make, like, your financial reporting more transparent, you're supposed to show that being paid, you know, as a liability in June, because that's money that you guys know you owe as of that time. So that was always about, you know, that was always about three to four million the last couple of years, and I, we always thought that was very high. So this year, we looked into it a little more, you know, you know, pulled your exact reports from everything, and we saw that, you know, that should be a lot lower, but only about $1.5 million for that. So what we did for that is what's called a restatement. Basically, if we think something was off like that, obviously, if we ran through that amount of money on your profit and loss one year, like, adjust it to make it your profit and loss, your revenue and expenses look very far off from other years, and that wouldn't do you guys any good. Like, imagine, like, a $3 million some adjustment coming through in one year, which wouldn't even, which isn't even accurate, right? Like, you guys received any money, spent any money. So we do what's called a restatement, to basically show, as of last year, based on our, here's what it should have been, and, you know, here's what we think it should have been. So remember, you guys didn't receive any new revenue for that, even though your fund balance changed. That's no new revenue you guys are getting. It's just making your reporting more transparent. In other words, so it's money that you guys always had, except you guys just had kind of that earmarked as a liability that you guys thought would be paid out in future years, instead of just in your fund balance that you guys could use to make it for any decisions, you know, whether you're putting it towards this project, whether you're doing this, you know. That's really the difference. So like I said, the big thing to remember is just no new revenue at all. That's really, you know, just a change in almost a financial statement presentation is what it is. Because I know, I know that's a little bit weird, like, you look at it and could think, "Why, why did that change so much?" So sometimes that does happen. It's not something we like doing every year. Something you'd really, if you have to do, like, we like doing at one time. But we're, you know, we're confident now with all the balances and all, you know, we kind of were waiting to make sure there was nothing we were missing, and, you know, nothing that we, you know, because I know there's been a couple personnel changes the past couple of years, nothing that could have been there that no one was thinking of. And we're confident at this point that that wouldn't be the case. I mean, there could be small ones from year to year, but unless something, like, really came in, I don't think there would ever be anything of that magnitude, you know, going forward in the future. So I think, like, other than that, what I pointed out, you know, like I said, that changes nothing with your revenue and expenses. You know, just change the way you guys see that you guys would want to spend funds in the future, really, is what it is. It's just a balance sheet adjustment. And then in our financial statements, we have a small note about that for the user of the financial statements, just explaining, here's the amount we changed, here's what's, you know, that kind of thing. So, you know, really, other than that, our main points for the audit kind of all, kind of all still stand. I know we kind of went into detail, you know, the revenue and expense numbers, I know that were preliminary, kind of fall in line exactly with what we were talking about, you know. A little change here and there, but kind of. little change here and there, but kinda fall in line, you know, I don't think it's worth it to relitigate all that. You know, kinda fall right in line with how we talked about it, you know, the last work session that we, you know, that I discussed it with you guys. So, would there be any questions on that? You know, I know I said a lot of words about that fund balance, does everyone understand that? Would there be any further, would there be any questions on that? Why that change was made? What that means? Anything to that nature? Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a little lost, so, um, so, why, why was the accrued payroll number as high as it was?
So, that, that I can't really say why it was like that in the, so, what happens, and I've seen this happen at other school districts before, is a lot, say, a liability was there, just the current year, say it changed by, I'm using an easy example, $500,000 for the year. Some schools will just add on to that number, cause they think, oh, we came, you know, that's about what it should be. So, they'll just add on the current change to that number, the current decrease to that number from year to year. Cause it's always gonna be a little different, depending on who you have to pay out, you know, what their, what their salary is, that kinda thing. So, that's really why, you know, so, some schools just, well, I've seen it before, they'll just keep adding to it instead of clearing it out, cause, like I said, a lot of times it's not ideal to clear out, cause people don't wanna hit revenue and expenses, and then, say, say someone was doing an audit for about five or six, you know, five or six years, say that comes light, you know, it's not always something that you wanna go right on and say, oh, we had a change this last year because of this reason. It could get, you know, a little bit of an uncomfortable situation then.
So, so are you saying that in a given year, let's just say we didn't have all of our teaching positions filled?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, we didn't end up paying out as much as what was expected by budget for that particular year. So, you would have X number of dollars left over that were sitting in this accrued payroll segment. And then, the next year, the same thing could happen, and that was just compounding?
Yep.
Over year over year?
It was just compounding, like, I went back about at least, like, four, three, four, or five years, and it was just basically small increase or decrease, but was that that large enough? You know, so, our big worry was last year, like I said, coming in and saying, is there something we're missing with this? Now, you know, cause, again, that's not changing revenue or expenses, it's just changing the balance sheet. So, but, like I said, we're confident now, so, really, that's what was happening. Like you said, it was just kinda compounding from year to year.
So, so, we moved, we moved a segment of that now into our fund balance?
Correct.
Okay, so, then, the $83,000 that we were in the red from this budget, we technically were not, because there was still money in this accrued payroll that we could've offset?
No, that's something, that's something different, cause that's your profit and loss for the year.
Okay.
That's your, that's the difference between your revenue and expenses, what you guys spent, what you guys received. This is just, this is just basically for, the way you're, like, the accounting works, called accrual accounting. Basically, any money, like, you guys have, you guys have accounts receivables and accounts payables, which is just basically anything that you guys, like, for federal funds, say you guys spent money under your, you know, last year, you guys had a large receivable for your S R program. So, if you guys spent a lot of money in one year and didn't yet receive that money, you guys could say at June 30th, we know we're due that money, so, with accrual accounting, you're saying, we're booking that as an accounts receivable, which hits revenue, to show that, where, you know, so, that's kinda why, so, it gives you a better finance position of what you're get, still getting, and what's owed at the, as of the end of the year, is what, is really what those do in accrued payroll or something similar. That's not really, like, that total is just changing from year to year. So, like I said, we're just saying, we know what it was, what it should've been, based on this number, so, we're just going back to what that, what that total balance is. It's not really going through your revenue and expense at all. I know, I know it's a little bit of a different situation, so, does that make sense?
I, I, yeah, I think, I'm a biology person, not an accountant, so, I, full, full disclosure, so, um...
Oh, no, that's why I wanna make sure you understand.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I might have to have a to, to tutorial on that, but I think the broad, overarching, yes, I think I understand.
Yep.
What you're saying.
So, basically, what was going on is you guys, like I said, the funds were, except you guys were saying, of this, we owe this out for, that we have to pay people at the end of the year, instead of having it in fund balance where it truly should've been.
Okay.
It's not like anything different appeared overnight or anything, it just kinda, that's, that's just kind of the situation that happened. So, now, like, we're confident that we're correctly classifying it, and you guys, you know, that should be correct going forward. And schools, your size, that is about what it, cause you're only taking in, again, your July and August payments into account, like, your salaries, benefits, you, you know, all that information.
I, I think where I'm still confused is I don't understand why that doesn't equate, if, if that was, if we had a million dollars budgeted, and we only used $950,000, and we had this $50,000 left over, that was in this accrual account, why that doesn't, um...
Because we're, we went back and changed it, here's as of June 30th, what it should've been 2023. So, your 2024, I think, you're kinda think of, your 2024 activity is still hitting for the year, but it only would've been the difference between 23 and 24 number, instead, you know, so, whatever that, like, say that was $500,000 difference, that still did hit your, your account for the year.
Okay.
It's, but instead of it being from, I'm just using four to four million to 4.5 million, it's going from, you know, two million, you know, one million to 1.5 million, in other words.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think so.
Yep.
Maybe.
Oh, no, of course, yeah. So, yeah, I just wanted to put, like I said, after talking to Dr. Fox, we just wanted to make sure everyone had kind of understood why that was the case. And, like I said, hopefully, that's nothing going forward that we have to worry about, but just something we, if it's a bigger, like, say it was $30,000, we, you know, there's an auditor materiality level that we say, were the user of the financial statements looking at this, think any differently if we moved this thirty, if we ran it through current for the year? No. But for that number, of course, you know, like I said, that would, that could really make your numbers look different, you know, really different from what, where they're at now.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And everyone else is good on all the questions with the audit? Anything else? Okay, thank you guys so much, appreciate it.
All right, next, I need a motion to approve the minutes for the January 21st, 2025 Regular Board Meeting, February 4th, 2025 Policy Committee Meeting, and February 4th, 2025 Caucus Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next up, we have student rep reports. I can, but not through the microphone.
I just needed to do that, all right. I guess we get this one, sorry. Sorry about that. All right, hi, everyone. I know it's been a while since we've been here, but we have a lot of exciting updates for you tonight. So, the first thing I wanna talk to you guys about is the musical Anastasia. The tickets are now on sale. This is gonna be March 14th through 16th. 14th and 15th, the show will be at 7:00 PM, and on the 16th, that'll be our closing show, and that'll be at 2:00. Everyone's working really hard, and I think it's shaping up to be a really great show, so, everyone in the community is definitely highly, highly encouraged to come out and see that.
All right, let's see, oh, all right, this one's gonna work, perfect. Our mini-thon is coming up at the end of this month, on February the 28th. And if you're not familiar with mini-thon, it's basically a smaller version of the thon that Penn State does, is everyone familiar with that? Yeah, so, basically, instead of standing for 24 hours, we stand for about eight, and students can raise a minimum of $50 in order to attend the event during the school day. Now, we have a little bit of a success story when it comes to mini-thon this year. We were running behind on funds pretty significantly, and so, we hosted a small push week, where we raised about $5,000 in one week. Yeah, so, nothing like the power of the student body.
It's really exciting, and just to add on to that, the donor drive, all you have to do is look it up, look up Sesquinita, if you wanna look up a specific student, feel free to do that, and you can donate to their drive specifically, or you can donate just to the Sesquinita Drive, and it's a really great thing to do. It all goes to raising money for researching childhood cancer and helping the families of those children, so, it's a really great thing to do. Next up, we have in sports. Boys and girls basketball seasons are unfortunately over, but I think they both had an excellent season, and we wanted to offer a special congratulations to Ayana Fleischer, who scored 1,000 points, which is an incredible achievement, so, congratulations to Ayana.
Boys and girls wrestling is still going on strong, and we're hitting the postseason hard. I know we're getting into sectionals this week, and I think we're hosting girls on Friday and boys on Saturday, so, if you're interested to see and how we compete, feel free to stop by and see how we do.
And they're also looking for someone to sing the National Anthem, so, Dr. Fox, I've heard you're a really great singer, you should look into that. Okay, and then our last sports announcement.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, perfect.
You wanna sign up for that now? Can we pencil you in? We can vote on it.
We can, yeah, just, yeah, we can take it to a vote.
All in, all in favor?
At this time, I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah, I, I think we all have talents, that is, that is not one of mine, but I, I will support it any way I can.
Do you know the words?
Sorry, ladies, sorry to interrupt, please proceed.
I'll be excited to hear that. Okay, so, our last sports announcement is that tomorrow night, if the weather cooperates, we have our last bocce game, well, hopefully not our last, but the last regular season game, and that's senior night, and that'll be at 3:30, we're playing Halifax. So, if you're available, come out and support your bocce team.
Sesquinita High School is celebrating the Month of Kindness this February. This is also something we typically do every year, where we pose our students with a challenge each day in the month of February. And it's just sort of like a small task that can really spread kindness around the high school. I think Maddie read on the morning announcements the other day, I think the first one was to smile at someone in the hallways, and Maddie was the first person I smiled at, so...
Also, things that our school is doing as, like, initiatives, is this year, we're really focusing on activity days, and this is typically, like, once or twice a month, where Friday morning, kids will be able to pick and choose which activity they wanna attend, and there's a lot of really good options. My personal favorite is trivia, but there's a lot of options, like, kids can go to the gym and play games, they can do art, they can watch a movie, and if they need a catch on bone work, they can do a study hall. And this is something that I, I personally have heard really good reviews about, it really boosts morale, it's good for students, like, mental health, it's great to take a break, and it's pretty infrequent, but it's a really, really positive thing for the students. And today, we just sent out a survey about that, so, I think we're gonna get some more thoughts and ideas about ways we can make this even better, but, yeah, it's a, it's a good program we're doing.
And I would just like to add on to that, I don't mean to brag, but I am the undefeated champion of Guess the Lyrics, so, if any of you are interested in challenging that title, feel free to stop by next Friday, yeah?
It's really good.
Okay, all right, I'll expect, I'll prepare for that.
8:00 AM.
Sharp. And finally, I'm proud to announce that the media team has been working on ways that we can get the student body more involved in events around the high school, and we've decided to start reading afternoon announcements over the loudspeaker. So, we do morning announcements over the TVs that teachers turn on for their homerooms, and we just announce things going on in the school throughout the day, throughout the week. But, just to sort of get kids out and get kids active and in their school community, we've been reading events that are coming up or are that night over the loudspeaker, so that it's fresh in people's minds, and that they can plan to attend certain things.
That's it, and I think we're gonna head out because of the weather, but if anyone has any questions, anything at all?
Good job, as usual.
Yes, thank you very much, both of you, we appreciate all of the updates and all that you do representing the student body. Thank you.
And we agree, head out, get home safe.
Okay.
Please.
A great night, thank you.
You too.
All right, got some treasures reports there for you, if you're bored and wanna look over some stuff later. Next up, I need a motion to approve the following payment of orders. A February General Fund mid-Pen prepaid for $10,548.13. February General Fund First National Bank prepaid for $49,969.34. And a General Fund First National Bank check summary of $312,248.35.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Is there any discussion at this time?
I need to abstain from check number 831, please.
Thank you, next.
I need to abstain from check number 793.
Thank you.
I need to abstain, abstain from check number 825.
Thank you.
And I need to abstain from check number 821.
Thank you.
I need to abstain from check number 813.
Thank you.
I need to abstain from check 814.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next, I need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 Financial Statements and Single Audit Provided by Klaesik Associates.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next up, I need a motion to approve Personnel Matters 8A through J.
So moved.
Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next up, I need a motion to waive the coaches' matrix for baseball, not to exceed the budgeted amount of $11,325 combined for the coaches that are listed there.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next, I need a motion to approve the curriculum maps.
They're moved.
Yeah, that are listed there.
Second.
Thank you, Phil.
You're welcome.
Any discussion?
Yeah, just, just for a point of clarification, I think I got my answer to it, but my understanding is that although there's only two maths listed there, Algebra I and Geometry, that there will, the other ones will be forthcoming in that area, okay.
It doesn't seem that we just got these.
Yep. Perfect, thank you, thank you for everything that you've done there.
Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next, I need a motion to recommend the board add Kayla Smith to the approved Roarbus driver list.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next, I need a motion to approve the second reading of Policies 217 Graduation and 807 Opening Exercises.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Next up, I need a motion to approve the Board Discipline Committee's Recommendation for Student 072408.
So moved.
Second.
Anyone opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center update, I was not able to attend the meeting, as Dr. Jones has been filling in for, has taken on that responsibility for me, but I don't know if you have any update on their recent activities?
So, I think at this point, right now, in terms of the construction project and the expansion project, it is out for advertisement, and then bid opening should be relatively soon, then we'll get a chance to go through that process, then of the next steps of looking over those bids, to see where those bids come back at. So, my understanding right now is that it is being advertised, and they're looking for competent and qualified contractors to submit bids for, for that project. They continue, they had a great showing at the Skills USA Competition, and a great showing at the Farm Show as well, and Skills USA is, is quite an organization where it's really, it provides students an opportunity to demonstrate their skills against other schools, and it is a, not just a national, but it's an international competition that really showcases and highlights the amazing skills that students are learning within the career and technical programs. And definitely, Cumberland Perry has done a great job overall as a school, and our students that we send, just bolstering our Blackhawks, have, have done an outstanding job as well. And I believe at the March Caucus Meeting, that Mr. Tom Wolfe, the new administrative director, will be joining us to... meeting that Mr. Tom Wolf, the new administrative director, will be joining us to provide an overview and just to kind of go over some of the things that he's gleaned thus far in the direction of Cumberland Perry Area Career and Technical Center.
Blackhawk Foundation update. Oh, we're going to throw it back here to Ken Mord. I was going to say, I, I know about a golf tournament, but you're much more into it, so.
So the fundraiser in right now, and we've mentioned this a few times, is going to be the Sportsman's Raffle. We're about halfway through the window of selling tickets and I think we're almost about halfway through the tickets that we've sold. I'm going to be at the Sectionals Wrestling Tournament a little bit this weekend, trying to get rid of tickets. Anybody's more welcome to reach out to me or stop at elementary school. I have a bunch of tickets there, but we would definitely like to get rid of all them before the draw-in on April fifth, which is going to occur right here in this room at noon, which is a Saturday. And then we talked about the, the Blackhawk Foundation Annual Golf Tournament that's going to take place on Friday, June twenty-seventh. I believe tee-off time is going to be noon that day. If you have never attended that one, or you can ask anybody that has attended that golf tournament, food is fabulous. Eagles Crossing in Carlisle, they do an amazing job putting everything together for us. Last year, we had a great turnout. I'm hoping we're going to have the same this year. We're still looking for sponsors moving forward to sponsor this event and we will have sign-ups probably opening up by the end of the month here. Just to get things rolling here and more details will be coming out on social media and through our website.
Thank you, sir. All right. That box there for mark your calendars is a lot, whew. All right. We're going to be here a lot over the next couple of months. Come join us. There you go. There's your schedule. Yeah, there's one week, if you actually look down through it, I think. February twenty-seventh, we're, we're not here otherwise. All right. Administrator reports. What do you got?
Oh, lots going on, but certainly I will, kudos to, to Maddie and Olivia. They've done a great job of providing a lot of highlights of the incredible happenings throughout the high school and throughout the district. So lots of things going on, but again, we'll be back in here, back in action on Thursday evening at six o'clock, February thirteenth, for one of our first kind of budget review meetings. So if you're interested in learning the process that we use for our, the planning for our twenty-five, twenty-six budget, please either participate via live stream or come in person to hear the process. It's definitely a process and it's one that we take a lot of pride in, looking at, reviewing, discussing, and prioritizing the, the, you know, all the needs associated with operating, you know, a school district. So that first one is February thirteenth. No worries. If you can't come to that one, there's another second one coming up in February as well, February twentieth, twenty-two-five. Both of those at times are at six o'clock here within the high school LGI. So just some winter announcements. The winter weather, unfortunately, Punxsutawney Phil wasn't a fan and didn't do his part as our state prognosticator. So, you know, unfortunately, there's going to be some changes to the academic calendar. So please review that twenty-four, twenty-five calendar that's on our website and notice under the box to the right-hand side, it will say snow makeup days and those order will be there as well. So they'll be enumerated one, two, and three. Right now, we're at, we've utilized two days and I'll just stop at that point. So we'll see what the weather leads coming in here this, this week and future weeks. As Maddie and Olivia also stated, now's the time to get your tickets for the outstanding musical Anastasia. It's certainly a really cool story, is what I'm being told, right? It's a story of family. It's a story of hope, good overcoming evil. Curtains will go up March fourteenth at seven, March sixteenth at two, and a special showing for our community, for our veterans and our seniors on March thirteenth at three-thirty. So come out and enjoy all of the outstanding talents and hard work that our students are doing and come and support them in all of the, all the efforts that they have. So thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so I'll just touch on a few things happening here at the high school. It's tough to beat some of the things that the student reps bring up. The first thing that I want to talk about, as they mentioned, we sent out a student survey today just to reflect a little bit on our activity days. We're at the mid-year point, so we wanted to get some student feedback and kind of continue to grow those and make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the students, since that is a student-led initiative. The second thing is our alternative education program is undergoing its state review process at this time. Last week was kind of the program overview and then this week we had the site visit, so we're looking forward to some of the feedback that we get at the end of that process. Then the final thing I want to mention is first round of our Cumberland Perry Career and Technical Center application. Process is complete. Student interviews were the last part of that process and they wrapped up last week, but it's not too late to apply. If any students are out there thinking of still wanting to go to VOTEC next year, the second round of applications are being accepted at this time and are due by Friday, February twenty-first. Please check out their website for any more information or a link to the application.
Good evening. I'm prepared this evening. Couple things. The first thing I want to mention, on Saturday, January twenty-fourth, there was a seventh and eighth grade dance. Over a hundred and eighty students showed up and it was well-attended and they had a lot of fun. Mr. Black attended that and participated. Following that, the following week, Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, they, PTO had a fundraiser and the top twelve sellers earned a lunch down in Marysville at Zatterelli's. And the way they got there was on a limo. So I also attended in the limo with them and took lots of pictures. It, it was a lot of fun. The kids were so polite. They were, and well behaved. And the last thing, just at the end of the month, January thirty-first, was the Best of the Blackhawks for the K, keeping a positive attitude. So they earned donuts at the morning and then the end of the day, they had a period to kind of cut loose and play some games with their peers. Currently this week, they are selling love lollies, I believe, lollipops sending to different friends across the building and the PTO is selling wooden roses as well. I think Mrs. Mottash has a short iMovie to share with you at some point, sharing some of the pictures from the limo, all of the events that I shared tonight. So hopefully you enjoy that then.
Thank you. And this time, you're actually officially on payroll. So, you know, it makes sense that you're prepared, right? Last time it was, yeah.
Just want to let you from a special ed perspective, we are still waiting on our special ed monitoring report. There were some follow-up information that we had to provide to our Bureau of Special Education Rep to just to clear up a few things and, you know, a couple tick marks that he had. We wanted to, we wanted to show him that we were actually doing them. So we did provide him all of that. We have begun the process for E S Y already. I know it's like just February, but we're already starting that. We, our Armstrong group, which is a select group of students, needs to have a determination made by February twenty-eighth and parents contacted and revisions made and all that. So we are in the process of that. Within the next month after that, everybody else will be determined E S Y eligible. We are going to, we're going to still be able to have it in-house this year, which is great. We do have, already have two teachers that have committed, as well as two powers and a speech and language pathologist. So every month I will start sending out my, hey, don't forget about me email. And I have no, I feel pretty confident we will get everybody that we need. I like to have two teachers per room for a total of six and two powers per room, just one, in case anyone's ill or we have to backfill anybody, and also just so that we can meet the unique needs of the students. We have started our early intervention meetings with the IU. We have twenty-five students that are coming in this year that have already been identified in one way or another with a varying level of needs. So in the next few months, we'll be bringing those parents in with the kids, getting to really get eyes on them. We can get a lot out of a report, but not what we can do with our eyes. And also going out to, actually, Mr. Ward and I will be going out to do a couple onsite visits, just so that we can get eyes on the kiddos and see what we need to do and what their placement programming will look like. So that's where we are.
All right. From the finance side of things, I just want to, you know, Tony left, but just letting you guys know, you know, they did a really good job, you know, himself and Klaesic Associates for going above and beyond, you know, and helping us fill some of our voids that we had, you know, this past year. So they really did more than what they really needed to do for us. So thanks to them. I also want to thank my internal team down there. They did, you know, a great job, you know, just filling in a lot of open roles, you know, a lot of, crossed many different paths that they aren't, you know, familiar with and they really rolled up their sleeves and went the extra mile. And I really appreciate everything that they do, you know, helping get me on board as well. Thank you guys for approving Ken. He's going to be a huge asset to us down there and really help us, you know, achieve the future ideas and goals that I have for the finance department. I'm working with the school fiduciary advisors, so the student activity accounts. I know I got some, some of them are frustrated, you know, not understanding their financials and stuff like that. So I'm taking the opportunity to, you know, sit down with them, really revisit that, those accounts and, you know, help them understand what they have and, you know, put some guidelines in place on how we're going to use that and stuff like that. So kind of working toward that as well. Also, very excited to, you know, transition from twenty-twenty-four being done and also starting to prepare for twenty-twenty-six. So I'm looking forward to physically being at the, most of the budget meetings over the next coming months with you guys and spending many hours with you. So hopefully you guys are as excited as me.
We are excited. Just since I didn't get to see you last week due to illness, but I just wanted to make sure to bring up again that I'm really, really excited that our district comprehensive plan is almost complete. And hopefully at our next caucus meeting in March, I will be able to provide you guys an overview of where we're at with that, to get that approved and submitted to the state. So we're really excited. It's been a long process, a lot of work, a lot of hard work, and we're ready to share that with everyone. So, thank you.
Mr. Frog, can I get a quick turn?
All right. All out.
Really, really quick. PTO, shout out to them. They're doing an amazing job. Book Fair wrapped up last week, well, actually yesterday because we bumped back for, from a day off. They're also selling wooden roses this week. That was today and tomorrow. We have kindergarten registration parent meeting coming up on March sixth at six o'clock. Very, very important to pre-register for that. Information's out on Facebook. We've sent some emails. We got notifications out all over the community for that. The big thing, the thing I really wanted to touch on tonight was a shout out to Ms. Lang, our, our data instruction specialist at Sesquinita Elementary School. She applied for a grant and was awarded that grant where we could get coats for three dollars. So we worked together as a district and a team led by Ms. Ms. Lang and ran a week full of dress downs. The teachers and staff got to pick which days they wanted to dress down. They could have dressed down for the whole week, but we were able to acquire five hundred and forty coats at the elementary school, which is absolutely amazing. She placed the order at the end of last week. They showed up yesterday. FedEx dropped them off and we have so many coats, we don't even know what to do with them. That's not true. We know exactly what to do with them. But shout out to Ms. Lang and she is such a tremendous asset to our building. That's not part of her role, part of her job, but she is committed to our, our elementary school community and we can't thank her enough for what she, she's doing for us.
That's, honestly, it's awesome. I wish I could get my kids to leave the house and wear a coat. I don't know what the thing is nowadays, but like, it's a cool thing to like not wear a coat and just walk around and shiver. I don't get it. I'll just quickly go and say, as a district, we do a really good job at this and I know we'll do it anyhow, but with those deviations from the originally planned calendar, let's just make sure that we send out those notices like a day or two in advance. Just say, oh, hey, just reminder that, you know, we did it because of like this week, how the schedule's different. Just, just putting that out there. Thank you all administrators, everybody, for, for all those updates. Are there any board members wishing to provide any reports at this time? Not a single one. All right. Sounds good. They're trying to just get out of here quick. Public comments in the crowd. Oh, all right. How about, and nothing online. Okay. Yeah. Don't all rush to the microphone at once. All right. At this time, I will, I will make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Too bad?
Shouldn't we have a, a meeting or something for flowers?
Phil, you're welcome to go in. You're welcome to go in. All right. Anyone opposed? All right. None. Motion carries.